Time's up. This session is from five thirty to six thirty and it's the section number thirteen. And this is about the Home Affairs Bureau. I'd like to welcome Secretary for Home Affairs and his team for their attendance. Before, I invite members to raise questions, I'll hand over the floor to the Secretary for a brief introduction. Every member will be given four minutes. And please cite the reply zero number when you speak. You don't have to read out all the five pages, Secretary, please just provide some highlights. Chairman, the Home Affairs Bureau is responsible for quite diversified policy bureau covering a total of eight acts of expenditure. Our priority area with additional resources provided in the new financial year are as follows. First scholarship to promote multifaceted excellence. We're going to set up a scholarship of one hundred million dollars. We encourage universities and tertiary institutions to admit about twenty local students who excel in sports arts and community service. To undergraduate programs each year on a full cost recovery basis. We plan to seek funding approval from the Finance Committee of this council in May twenty fourteen. Subject to funding approval, the project will be launched in the latter half of this year. And the first batch of scholarship awardees will be enrolled to the universities in September twenty fifteen. Starting from the financial year twenty fourteen to fifteen, an additional funding of ten million per annum will be a earmark for promoting multiple pathways to youth. Invite NGOs in collaboration with secondary schools to enhance career guidance for secondary students. The youth uniform groups, the Hong Kong Award for Young People and the Agency for Volunteer Service have been maintaining a partnership with the government in promoting youth development. We will double the recurrence of question for the uniform groups to about a hundred million dollars in twenty fourteen fifteen. We expect that the number of youth members benefited will be increased to over one hundred thirty-eight thousand. We also increase the funding for the assistance scheme for needy student members to six million dollars. The number of beneficiaries is expected to double to fourteen thousand. Youth exchange and internship programs. In order to help broaden the horizons of young people, we allocate additional resources to offer more mainland or overseas exchange opportunities and intern placements on the mainland for youth. In twenty fifteen, fourteen fifteen, the estimated provision for the International Youth Exchange Program I Y E P will be increased to two point nine five million dollars. We are actively exploring the feasibility of extending I Y E P to more countries. We've also launched the funding scheme for youth internship on the mainland and the Community Participation Scheme for organizing study tours to the mainland, under which community organizations are given funding support to offer more mainland internship exchange opportunities for youth. With the allocation of additional resources, it is estimated that the total number of youth beneficiaries will increase by over fifty percent. To broaden the effective implementation of the concept of addressing district issues at the local level and capitalizing on local opportunities in a progressive manner, we'll introduce a pilot scheme in Shangshou Po and Yunnan to give decision-making power to the district management committees chaired by district officers to tackle the problems involving management and environmental hygiene, et cetera, of the same of some public areas. The district councils will provide views on work priorities. We'll provide a total of ten million dollars for these two districts and additional non-CPO service contract staff to support the implementation of pilot scheme in Shangshou Po and Yunnan from April twenty fourteen to August twenty fifteen. To strengthen support surface for ethnic minorities to help them integrate into the community in twenty fourteen fifteen, the Home Affairs Department will put in place a series of new measures, including starting up a new support service center for ethnic minorities in Chai Ching to provide tailor-made classes and integration programs, setting up youth units in all six support service centers and two subcenters to provide dedicated programs to help the personal growth of ethnic minority youths and implementing a youth ambassador scheme to recruit ambassadors familiar with ethnic minority cultures and languages and with a similar background to reach out to ethnic minority youths to share their experience, offer advice and make referrals as necessary. In addition, the H A D will recruit additional staff familiar with ethnic minority cultures and languages to assist in the implementation of relative initiatives. This year, we'll continue to actively promote diversified development of culture and arts on all fronts in terms of cultural activities. We are planning to build a cross-district cultural, community cultural center in Lao Tzu Court with a twelve hundred seat auditorium and a five hundred fifty seat theater. More of our plans are in hand to undertake major renovation expansion of the Hong Kong Museum of Arts. We will also strengthen our local support for local arts groups. Starting from twenty fourteen fifteen, the recurrent funding of for these bodies would increase by thirty million dollars and increase of more than thirty percent over twenty thirteen fourteen. This amount will be used to subsidize organizations. The total amount of subvention for the major performing arts groups has been increasing gradually from the past year from some two hundred twenty million in twenty oh seven oh eight to three hundred forty, four, three hundred thirty-four million in twenty fourteen fifteen. Sports facilities, to promote greater participation in sport from twenty oh seven to early twenty fourteen, we have built new facilities and upgraded existing facilities. We will budget a cost of over ten billion dollars. In total, the swimming complexes in Kuntong and Victoria Park reopened last year after extensive redevelopment. And new projects currently underway include indoor sports centers in Area fourteen B of Shaotin, Area three of Yunnan and Area four of Chengyi. In twenty fourteen, we plan to seek electrical support to allocate more than one point seven billion dollars for the construction of new indoor sports center in Area twenty forty of Shaotin and Area fourteen of Timun. But time is limited, I think I should pause here so that members can raise questions. My colleagues and I are happy to take questions from members. All right, I think we can start the last Q and A session for the day. Every member has four minutes, the first one is Mr. Wong Kok Hing. I have two questions for the Secretary. What the first one is about the collaboration for multiple, for the promotion of multiple pathway for youth. I understand the Education Bureau is also promoting career planning or a lifelong planning. Can the H A B take this up with other departments and bureaus, including the Education Bureau? Can there be inter-bureau collaboration, Secretary? The second question is a bit complicated. It's about local districts would capitalize on the local opportunities. I have been a D C member for seventeen years. I know that in the district, the district officer is somewhat senior in rank to other local officials. So ten million dollars will be given to the two districts, of course, I support this. But the question is, you are going to give the D O more power. This is, I'm suggesting that you give the D C, District Officer, more power, not just give them more money. So I, I'm, I would like to say that giving more decision-making power to the district officers would be more realistic. And you are going to hire additional N C S C staff. If you want to give the D Os more power and you want to enhance local administration, why don't you hire permanent staff? What do you want to hire N C S C staff? Secretary? Thank you for your questions, Mr. Wong. H A B and the Education Bureau are in communication over these matters. In this policy address, we have a special feature and that is at a very senior level. We would look, take a comprehensive look at youth development from C S four A F S. And there is a better coordination at a higher level to look after youth development. On the district administration, Mr. Wong, well, this is a pilot scheme which is meant to try things out. These district officers are chairing the district management committees. But on the committee, we also have representatives from different departments. And they are responsible to senior levels in their own departments. For example, when it comes to environmental hygiene, the F E H D may have its own priorities to deal with different issues. And the priorities may not be the same as the priorities as perceived in the districts. So if we use this as an example, maybe we need to give additional resources to support the development along this line. And if things, if things go smoothly, we may have regularize some of the N C S C staff. And we may have to increase the number of posts or there may be no need to do so. Well, can you give the district officers ten million dollars more and then they would get more power? The Permanent Secretary has issued a circular to the departments in respect of this pilot scheme in Shangshou Po and Yunnan. And the district council and the two district officers have been empowered to deal with local issues. So power and money, both power and money will be given to the D Os, okay? Next member, Mr. Frankie Yip. I want to, want to talk about reply one seven oh and one seven two. Two weeks ago, there was an oral question, I raised several similar question on the Legal Aid Department. Now I've been given some more figures in one seven two. It seems that there is a high concentration on contracting out of Legal Aid work to some lawyers. You have two thousand one hundred and thirty-five solicitors and eight hundred eighty-two barristers. So together, three thousand and seventeen lawyers are involved. For twenty thirteen and fourteen, the busiest ones work for ten to twenty-two hundred cases of forty-one point three percent. So the cases are highly concentrated in a small number of solicitors and barristers. And also in twenty thirteen and fourteen, thirteen lawyers or either solicitors or barristers were disciplined. And there's a bracket, if exemption is granted by directorate officers, that would be an exception. I just don't understand, if they are regarded as no good and are suspended, why, why is it that an exemption can be granted for, by directorate officers? And then there was a follow-up question. In a recent case, the applicant, well, before he received Legal Aid approval, he made a claim of some three hundred thousand dollars. Once the Legal Aid was granted to support his case, the claim was suddenly raised to three million plus. How can you show that your monitoring system is effective? I will, I raised this because I want the Secretary to invite the I C A C to look at the way the Legal Aid system is operated. I'm not asking for an investigation into L A D so that we can avoid chump-hatty cases. If necessary, Mrs. Chan Kim Bo and I would be more than willing to provide additional documents together with some lawyers and people in the relevant sectors. Secretary, well, the Director of Legal Aid is here, he can supplement. But let me respond to Mr. Yip's questions. Thank you, Mr. Yip, for your questions. I remember, Chairman, you also raised that there's a high concentration of outsourced legal services. We have some indicators. We have some indicators to go by so as to avoid overly concentration of outsourced Legal Aid lawyers. We would like the relevant sectors, including the insurance sector, and also the involvement of I C A C in looking at ways to make improvement. We're willing to consider this. Actually, the I C A C has been helping the Legal Aid Department in this regard. The Director can supplement. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Yip, for your question. In this regard, I would like to supplement. There's a mechanism within the Legal Aid Department, that is, the cases which are handled by outside lawyers will be arranged in such a way that a lawyer will not be handling too many cases.
We are worried that if a lawyer handles too many cases, in particular cases relating to injuries, then he may not be able to take care of the interests of the claimant adequately. But then section thirteen of the ordinance states that the claimant or the legal, the legally aided person has the right to choose his own lawyer. In fact, last year, we formed a joint working group with the I C A C on the briefing out mechanism. We are concerned about cases of trepancy. And so we are having studies in this regard together with the I C A C. Right, Mr. Yip Kin Yun, I've got two questions. The first question is a follow-up on Mr. Wong Kok Hing's question. I understand, we understand that the Education Bureau also wants to promote the concept of multiple pathways and career guidance for school students. So I would like to know the division of labor between the Education Bureau and the H A B. So is it that the C S four A is responsible for the coordinating work? Or is it that there's another person responsible for the coordination? And then my second question relates to reply H A B zero five four. And that relates to the schemes for study tours to the mainland. I want to know whether there is any age criteria and is it that the students will be given full subsidy? Now, because I can see that for some of the study tours, the unit cost per person is up to eight thousand dollars. So I would like to know more about the subsidies for the participants. And do the participants need to submit reports after the, after they return? I think I'll ask the Permanent Secretary to answer the first question, answer the second question. And then concerning the first question, the two schemes are different, they do not duplicate each other. Now, the Education Bureau creates some posts in the various schools to provide career guidance to students. So these people are people who are experienced in career planning. And the H A B joins hands with NGOs outside the schools to organize activities to help students know more about how to, the channels available to further their studies and also skills to find jobs. Yes, thank you, Chairman. I want to say that the funding can be applied for, by NGOs and schools. The details are available on the website. So students will be going on exchange tours to the mainland. We offer subsidies for students with regard to accommodation and meals in the mainland. And the organization's concern will have to send staff to accompany the students. We do not pay the salaries of these staff, but then we provide subsidies for the activities, pre-activity, briefings, and also post-activity discussions. And organizations need to give us reports after the, the exchange tours. Chairman, it is said that subsidies will be provided to students. Is it that there will be full subsidies covering transport expenses, meal expenses, accommodation, and so on and so forth? So is it that students basically do not need to incur any expenditure if they join such exchange tours? Yes, correct. So what is the cap concerning the subsidy for the students? I can provide the information after the meeting. Mr. Chan Kapi, I've got three questions. First of all, now we have over four hundred district councillors in Hong Kong and their assistants only get very meager pay. But then upon the expiry of their contracts, even if they get their severance pay or L S P, that would, that will be offsetting with M P F. Now, I want to declare interest first, I am a district councillor of the Island District. So will there be some of money set aside so that it can be used to pay the end of contract creativity of the assistants? Second, the Secretary said in his opening speech that there would be more resources available to provide district-based sports facilities. This is good news. Now, according to some district councillors, the population in a particular area has reached fifty thousand and still the sports facilities are not available. I'll give you one example. Now, the population of Tong Chong will approach one hundred thousand. And so will you take the initiative to plan for another stadium? And then may I refer to head ninety-five program area two, L C S D, horticulture and amenity facilities. But then I see under this program area, zoos. Now, some members of the public and children have said that there are public zoos in many cities in the mainland. There are also zoos in Taipei. But then we don't have a zoo in Hong Kong. Of course, we have the Hong Kong Botanical and Zoological Garden, but that's all. So I just want to know whether the government will consider providing a zoo for the members of the public in Hong Kong. Yes, I think the third question can be answered by the Director of Leisure and Cultural Services. And then concerning honorary area for district councillors, there was an adjustment earlier on. And I think we need to first of all consider the honorarium of district councillors, not that of their assistants. And we'll keep this under regular review. But then I think we, of course, can consider Mr. Tang's suggestion. And then district-based facilities, sports facilities. Now, we work in accordance of the planning standards and guidelines. In fact, I said right at the outset that we had spent one hundred million dollars on district-based sports facilities. And so we will decide on the priorities. Director, now, at the moment, L C S D manages the zoological botanical gardens and we have over eight hundred thousand visitors per year. But then it has a long history, there's a history of over a century. And so we hope that we can bring in new species. And we are having a consultancy study. And so will you just enhance the garden or will there be a new zoo? We're talking about in situ expansion, we hope and enhancement. We hope that we can introduce new species into the garden, we have no plans to build another zoo. Mr. Wu Chi Wei, thank you, Chairman. Building management is an issue of great concern to members of the public. Half of the buildings in Hong Kong are private buildings. But then it seems that building management is only the second, third or fourth priority of the H A B. And may I refer to program area two, district administration? No additional staff will be available to deal with building management. Now, Secretary, in fact, we have had a number of motion debates on this subject. And you said that you would review the manpower establishment for building management work and you would consider whether additional liaison officers would be required. But it seems that no progress has been made over the years. So is it that you think there are already enough people to do a building management work? And if you think that the establishment is adequate, if you think you don't want to increase the establishment, then will you consider reviewing the scope of the work of liaison officers? In other words, we hope that liaison officers can be dedicated to the work of building management. Now, as you know, building management involves legal issues, building management disputes and the liaison officers need to be familiar with C A P three four four. And so I think it's important that liaison officers deal with building management work only and not other issues. Secretary, I think the member was concerned, in fact, the Director can tell you that in fact, there will be additional manpower resources to take care of building management. Yes, Chairman, yes. In the past five years, there was an increase in the number of liaison officers responsible for building management. In the past five years, there was a nine percent increase from one hundred and ten to one hundred and twenty officers. So we increased the manpower resources needed to deal with building management issues. And we also reviewed our priorities, we tried to optimize our work arrangements. And we also brought in professionals to help us. Now, I think I've heard such replies many times. Chairman, can the H A B give members a detailed report on the, on the work of building management coordination within the Bureau? Because we're having more and more private buildings in Hong Kong. So would that be a thorough review? Is there an intention to carry out a review? Chairman, I think perhaps after the meeting, I can ask Mr. Wu the directions of review that he has in mind. Chairman, I've got another simple question. I understand that small libraries are provided in the districts. Now, in the, in Wong Tai Sien, when there were no sites, then we were told that a small library could not be provided because of the lack of sites. But then when there were sites, we were told that there would not be such a project. So I want to know whether there are planning standards to go by, for example, a small library for every thirty to fifty thousand people? Yes, Director. I want to say that small libraries are provided, not merely on the basis of the population in the district. And we also, we need also to consider whether there are other districts in the district. In Wong Tai Sien, if there is a demand for library services, then we may be providing mobile libraries. But then if the population keeps on increasing, then we'll consider whether there is a need to provide a small library. But the population is one hundred thousand and you think there is no need for a small library? It really depends on the distribution of libraries in the district.
I want to ask a question about building maintenance. On the sixteenth of March, when we competed our march against bid rigging, you, you wrote in your web that we should work together. This morning, we asked a similar question of Mr. Chan, Secretary for Development, and he said, it's your job. I just cannot see how many resources are devoted in countering bid rigging. I'm talking about reply one oh nine, and that is the pilot scheme. He said that there are He said that there are consultancy advisory and advisory work. Thirty-five teams have been sent. I would like to know about the establishment of staff. You've only one part-time administrative executive spending four hundred thousand dollars a year. There are thirty-five teams, and you are handling maintenance works on more than a hundred housing estates, and you have only got one part-time executive assistant. Is this just a gesture if the tendering exercise is about to start or has been completed? Can the owner seek your advice, who are not members of the OC? Or would you be handling this just like other OC matters? The Director can supplement. And we are very concerned that in building maintenance projects, there are bid rigging allegations. Through this APEC Advisory Service Scheme, and there are volunteers, professional people, providing advisory service to raise awareness of OCs. We are also collecting the intelligence to remind people that should they encounter alleged criminal acts, such as criminal intimidation, ICC and the police can be asked to take immediate action. But together with three professional bodies, that this AP Building Maintenance Advisory Service Scheme is launched. And all we need is to hire an executive assistant spending four hundred thousand dollars. And then we pay the volunteers, who are professional people, some traveling allowance, so the expenditure is not good. Here, we're talking about the Hong Kong Institute of Surveyors, the Hong Kong Institute of Engineers, and the Hong Kong Institute of Architects. There are thirty-five such teams, expert teams. And we hope that we can at least cover the advisory work for ten buildings. The service provided is to help them draft the documents for the hiring of consultants, and then how to assess tenders, and also drafting of contracts, contract documents. The core of the entire process, the most important process, is to hire a decent bona fide consultant. Many a time, when there are alleged bid rigging, it started with the building or the OC not hiring competence or bona fide consultant, or they are hiring these people at very low cost. How can you handle seventy states with just one part-time executive assistant? Well, they've explained that they have volunteers. Dr. Kenneth Chan, time is limited. I want to cover three areas with some comments. First of all, Director of Home Affairs is here. This morning, in one session, we mentioned your name. Because in the Town Planning Board meetings, your attendance or the attendance of your representatives is among those with a lower rate. And the Permanent Secretary for Development said he would talk to you. As for the provision of winter sports facility or facilities on ice, in the past two Winter Olympics, Hong Kong did send an athlete. It's mentioned that we need to have an ice sport center. But in the reply, for this year, still we haven't reserved any resources to assess the need for ice sport facility. It has been dragged on for years. We are very disappointed. And second, I hope the Secretary can discuss with us the governance of SFNOC. In replying to members' questions, it's said that in this financial year, it's nineteen point nine million dollars of funding. And then there are also millions to be provided to SFNOC for the hosting of mega events. These are accountable subsidies. And there will be reports, an annual financial reports. Would the administration release such a financial reports for public access, especially when people are so interested in the governance of SFNOC and NSA's? Many people think that transparency is low. In the latest round of elections, some members of NSA's would like to observe the process, and they were turned away. So what's your response, Secretary? Secretary, would you be responding to the questions, or would you be deferring to your permanent secretary? It's said that we provide subsidies to SFNOC. Whether the information, the reported information will be made available for public inspection. Since we're talking about public funds, of course, such reports are available to the public. And is it true that for this financial year, there's no need to conduct or to start a review on ice sports facilities? Because we have been sending athletes to Winter Olympics for a number of times. Well, Hong Kong people love sports of different sorts. So in respect of different sports, there have been suggestions for additional facilities. Forgive me for interruption. You have this Sports for Life Initiative. So this is not a request that is suddenly raised. What about doing something in the Kai Tech Sports Complex? Well, actually, yes, we'll consider providing such facilities in Kai Tech. But I cannot guarantee that there will certainly be such facilities. But this can certainly be considered. As for SFNOC, I will try to invite some NSA's and their representative to talk to you later. Mr. Ma Feng Bo, I have two follow-up questions. First, oh six eight and oh seven five on creative industry. Oh six eight, research in sport. That's one research. And as on financing, I think this is just a technical issue, not directly related to sports. And in the latter half of the year, consideration will be given to a study on management and operation. The problems related to the sports sector, which have become matters of concern to the community, for example, the match fixing, governance of NCA, the selection of athletes, facilities and menus. There's a need to conduct a comprehensive study and review. But there's no plan on the part of the administration. I'm disappointed. And you said you would be willing to consider the research in the community, which can facilitate sports development. But what's the application procedure? How can they apply for your support? There's no indication. Previously, there were funds earmarked for such research to be conducted, but not now. As for creative industries, people who are responsible for the facilities in the Hong Kong TDC, they find it difficult to communicate with the government because they are of a cultural nature, but they are also in part of the creative industries. So what is the appropriate counterpart for these creative industries in the government? I think Mr. Ma is offering comments rather than raising questions. Well, it's a simple question. It's said that the government would consider allowing the community organizations to conduct research projects. So what is the application process? And how are you going to assess whether to give support or not? As for creative industries, I think it's a simple question. But this is a finance, a special FC meeting. We're talking about how public funds are expended. If a community organizations want to do some research projects, we'll consider whether such research projects are warranted with reference to public interest, whether it's also in line with the open tendering system. Some arts corridor organizations would like to get some help. But the two bureaus said they were not responsible if they want to get sponsorship. Which question is this related to? Oh seven five. So in what context should creative industries or arts activities, which are also industrial activities, would HAB be willing to entertain the requests for assistance? Well, I'm more than willing to contact people in the cultural and creative industries. Next, Ms. Emily Lau, Deputy Chairman. The secretaries said we should be talking about public funds in this meeting. The Central and Western District Council reasoned it is something to allocate the two hundred fifty thousand dollar you gave them for the promotion of Basic Law. It was controversial. Of course, we respect the district council in coming up with the right fund allocation procedure. There must be a mechanism, and everything must comply with the system. And since you give them the funds, you should make sure that is transparent. Because there are different ways of allocating the funds, such as through circulation of email. Well, I don't think, Chairman, you like this idea of proving funding application through email circulation. So is there any cause for concern? Any cause for concern for you, Mr. Secretary? Let me address this question. There are rules for district councils to conduct their meetings. The rules are made by the district councils themselves. There are a number of tiers involved in allocating the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There are meetings of the working group, and they conduct their meetings in accordance with the standing orders, standing rules. So there were two meetings of the working group. And then the matter was submitted to the Cultural and Recreational Committee for endorsement and final approval to be given by the full district council meeting. And sometimes, since after the working group meeting, there was no scheduled recreation and culture meeting. That's why it was suggested that it should be done by circulation. But a member that this suggests that a meeting of the committee be convened, and the request was acceded to. Well, there's no question of doing things behind closed doors. And there was a full account given to the district council. The member said that in respect of decoration of inches, which is subject to a very comprehensive system in the district council, is not properly done. The chairman of the committee handled decoration of inches, and full explanation was given to that member on why the particular approach was adopted. We respect district councils. We can reflect our views to the district councils through other channels. But the operation of district councils warrants the involvement of the secretary and other officials. And in this case, we're talking about allocating some of public funds. I hope government officials will ensure that the allocation process is transparent and accountable. I would say the best way is to introduce the practice adopted in this council to the eighteen district councils.
I believe the administration does support the mode of operation of the Finance Committee. And it is hoped that for the district councils, if they are to approve funding, they should do so in a fair and transparent manner. Director, yes, of course, we fully support fairness, openness and transparency. Mr. Yip Kwok him.
Chairman, I want to say that I am a Central and Western District Councillor. I was involved in that exercise. Now, in fact, we have made reference to the rules of procedure of the legislature. So there is transparency, there is also accountability. I'm an elected member of the district council. I understand that I need to be accountable to the residents and to all members of the public. And there was disruption of the meeting proceedings. And I hope that the chairman of the Democratic Party can give your members some proper advice. And now I would like to ask a question in relation to HAB zero two six. And in fact, the question was raised by Mr. Christopher Chong. With regard to the funding for national education, there will be an increase in funding when compared with that for last year. I think national education is very important. So how can you make sure that you can promote national education outside schools effectively? And then another question relates to HAB one one eight, a question asked by me. Yes, I understand that there is the APEC scheme. But then concerning the one-stop service, it is said that there will be nineteen million dollars to provide one-stop advisory service for one thousand two hundred buildings, which do not have any OC or any form of owners or residence organization. So these are the so-called three new buildings. So I would just want to know how you're going to spend the nineteen million dollars, and do you think this amount is enough? I think the Deputy Secretary can answer the question about national education. The money is mainly used in the funding scheme for youth internship in the mainland and community participation scheme for organizing study tours to the mainland. And the expenditures were twenty million and about nineteen point nine million, respectively. Right, Building Management, Director? I want to say that the BMPASS will be for three years, and the estimated expenditure per year is nineteen million dollars. So we're talking about a total amount of nineteen million dollars times three. So these management companies can assess each and every of these buildings. And if there are no OC, or if there are OCs, and they are not very active, then these experts will try to give some assistance to these OCs and to help with the paperwork, tendering documents, and so on and so forth. And if there are no OCs, then assistance will be given for the establishment of OCs. And if there are no O Cs, then assistance will be given for the establishment of O Cs. And so we'll need about over fifteen million dollars over a three-year period. Ms Claudia Mo. First of all, reply one four one. Community support programs for ethnic minorities. Of course, I support these activities. But then concerning interpretation and translation, now I hope that the Home Affairs Department can take note of this problem. We have many E M s who need to apply for public housing. They go to the Housing Department and they can't get any help. Now, in fact, a Catholic community center provides translation and interpretation service for E M s who wish to apply for public housing. But then I want to say that over the past three years for interpretation service, zero times, zero times, and then one time last year. In fact, I want to say that in fact I've complained to the ombudsman already. Please don't think that quantity is equivalent to quality. Now, S W D, Department of Health, Labor Department, they do provide a reasonable level of interpretation service. But not the Housing Department. In fact, their numbers over the past three years were zero, zero, three respectively. And then I want to ask questions about replies one three six to one three eight, Building Management. Yes, I understand that the Home Affairs Bureau and the Home Affairs Department do try to help the O Cs. In fact, I have met a lot of your frontline officers. They are professional and very good tempered. But I think the bureau should do more. Now, for example, say if there is a letter from the O C, then the letter would be issued in the name of the management committee of the O C, so that the legal responsibility is diminished. The small owners are at a loss. They feel very confused. So an O C is an O C, a management committee is a management committee, and the two should not be confused. And then the M C's deeds of mutual covenant. I have already brought this to the attention of the secretary and the director. I understand that amending the legislation takes time, but I think we should make a start. Now, for example, Hong Kong Base Center, there are three stories for office use that stipulated in the D M C. How come the majority owner can say that hotel development can take place? Fortunately, the planning department did not give approval because of fire safety and traffic considerations. And the planning department also said there would be nuisance caused to those living upstairs. Right, I think time's up. Ms Long Chi Chang, I want to follow up on H A B two oh seven. And this relates to the third generation natural turfs and artificial turfs and then natural turfs. I understand that the H A B once consulted legal on changing the ratio between artificial turf pitches and natural turf pitches. So it is said that from twenty eleven to twenty sixteen, ten natural turf pitches would become artificial turf pitches. So I want to know why you are changing this ratio? Is it to save cost or is it because of the utilization rates? I asked about the recurrent and non recurrent expenditures and you were not able to give me such figures. But if natural turf pitches are turned into artificial turf pitches, then there will be a few problems. Now, in fact, you also need to care our maintenance for artificial turf pitches and replacement has to take place quite often. And then second, sometimes the plastic materials may get into the water channels and as a result there will be a pollution of the sea. And then for natural turf pitches, there will be temperature reduction. But then for artificial turf pitches, the temperature will increase. So have you considered the advantages and disadvantages of natural turf pitches and artificial turf pitches? Director, we do have a five-year plan, Chairman, to turn some natural turf pitches as well as the first generation and second generation artificial turf pitches into third generation artificial turf pitches. In fact, a football consultant has advised that this will help make available more venues because for natural turf pitches, there can only be sixty sessions or only forty sessions per month. But then for artificial turf pitches, the number can reach two hundred and seventy, the number of sessions. So the purpose is not to save money. We need to support soccer development in Hong Kong and so we need to provide more sessions, more venues. It's difficult to provide additional venues in Hong Kong. And so turning natural turf pitches into artificial turf pitches is one way out. And then concerning the plastic materials going into our drains, we have carried out some works to make sure that the plastic materials will not block our drains or get into the sea. And we are also stepping up the spraying of water. While we will have more artificial turf pitches, we have to still maintain some natural turf pitches for Division One football teams for their matches. But then for Happy Valley, three out of four of the pitches are now artificial turf pitches. Yes, there will be more sessions made available to footballers, but then it's not desirable to have fewer and fewer natural turf pitches. All right, I think the point has been noted. Ms Chen Yun Han.
Our chairman is eight thirty, so I think you really had a long day. Chairman, concerning resolving district matters at a district level. Now, I want to say that when we had the municipal councils, cultural activities were organized in the various districts by the two municipal councils. And then when the M C's were abolished, it was said that some of the duties or work would go to the district councils. Yes, I understand that there will be two pilot schemes, one in Shangshui Po and one in Yunlong. And then we are told that a total of ten million dollars will be set aside for the two districts and additional N C S C staff will be hired to support the pilot schemes. And the schemes involve management and environmental hygiene of some public areas. Now, I just want to know how much we can do with ten million dollars? Ten million dollars may be enough for networking. Now, in Quicheng, they have decided to spend about eighty million dollars to provide a dental assistance scheme for elderly persons. And that's part of their signature project. So the ten million dollars you've mentioned here, I think you are merely trying to do some window dressing to show that you support the concept of addressing district issues at a local level. We've recently been to Taiwan and we've looked at the cultural facilities there. Now, in fact, Beijing, Guangzhou, Taipei, they have a Department of Culture to deal with the cultural groups and the arts groups. Now, I understand that you have the nine major performing groups and there are many small and medium-sized groups. You have to help them find venues. It seems that the development of these groups outpaces the government's reaction. And Mr Raymond Young, I want to tell you that I support the increase of the plot ratio from one point three to one point eight. I have talked to many in the cultural sector. They think they won't be able to enter the West Kowloon C A. So concerning the ten billion dollars, how much can we achieve with ten billion dollars? I don't think I want to repeat the three questions. Yes, please? Yes, I'll try to answer these questions briefly. Concerning the pilot scheme on district management, now the district officer, as the chairman of the D M C, can target certain district problems. For example, illegal shop extension, street management, illegal parking of bicycles. Now, many departments are in fact trying to tackle these problems, but these departments do not have enough manpower because they have other priorities. And so we want to give the district officer more money. No, no, I don't think ten million dollars is enough. Let's give this a try first. And then second, Department of Culture in major cities in the region. Now, in fact, we are working with the C E D B to try to promote cultural development and then shortage of venues. I think you understand that we are trying to provide more venues and there will be a dozen new venues in the H K C D A or West Kowloon C D A. Of course, we need to have small venues as well as bigger venues.
Mr Chen Kim Bo, cap three four four, Building Management Ordinance, was the subject of an interim report. I'm talking about one four nine, reply one four nine, a question raised by Mr Tony Che. But the biggest loophole was not tackled in this report. And that is in the election. The chairman of the O C can decide whether the proxies of his opponent will are valid or not. But there's no one to check whether his own proxies are valid. So it can lead to cases of cheating. So I've suggested that some impartial parties be appointed to do the checking. Ideally, these should be H A D people. I hope you can increase manpower to handle the increase in workload. Members are not happy with the nine percent increase in the past five years, which is considered inadequate. So I want to remind the administration of the need to increase the provision next year. And I also want to talk about reply one seven oh and one seven one. It said that in the past years, some solicitors and barristers were disciplined because of poor performance. Does the H A L A D got sufficient manpower to monitor the performance of assigned out lawyers? Some of the cases were discontinued because of problems with the assigned lawyers. What are the problems? I'd like to thank Mr Chen for his questions. First question is about resources. L A D has got sufficient resources to monitor the way the assigned out cases are executed. And sometimes when we approve legal aid in the form of a limited legal aid certificate, only when the merits are fully established will we allow the case to continue. But as the case progresses, there may be some evidence and we may think that there's no point in continuation. So we may discontinue the case. What are the main reasons for doing this? During the litigation, some new evidence may be obtained from the other party perhaps. And our solicitors or barristers may think that the chances of winning the case would be slim and we have to discontinue the case. According to some people in my industry, once legal aid is granted, there will be a lot of delay because they are using public money in carrying out the litigations. These lawyers gain more because of the delay. What kind of checks are there to prevent delays? If we're talking about personal injury claims or accident victim claims, after the civil law reform, there's no way for the parties to delay the case. The court has the right to ask for expeditions proceedings. If we have files, we would give the file, if we have files, we can ask our director to review the case. Ms Alice Ma, regarding your speech, S H A, you mentioned sports facilities. How many sports stadiums will build? And later, we're going to have the Kai Tech Sports Complex. But I think you cannot just build swimming pools and sports complexes to promote the sports development. Last month, we had a motion debate on sports policy and promotion of sport. So do you have anything in terms of software to promote training? And what is the government going to do on the governance of N S A? I want to talk about reply zero number one oh one. And in twenty eleven, when you renew the lease of private clubs, you ask them to increase the number of hours when access by the public will be allowed. Actually, some clubs are using the time's laws for some fundraising activities conducted by non-members. And then they would fulfill your requirement. Are you, do you know what kind of public access is allowed in terms of hours of usage by non-members? You will monitor the facilities offered by such a private sports clubs. And N S As are required to upload to their websites on the selection criteria athletics. Fifty-two out of the fifty-eight have been able to do this. But what has happened to the other six? We want to have a greater degree of transparency. We don't, otherwise, we're going to see a repeat of the dispute arising from the competition and the Olympic Games. I asked my colleague, Mr McKinney, to say something about a private sports club. And I answered the first question. And that is, we just focus on building venues without providing training. That's not the case. Whether we're talking about sports for all or elite sports, elite athletes training, we devote a lot of resources to such initiatives. Hong Kong Sports Institute spent a lot of money annually to train elite athletes. L C S D support not just N S A, but also provide the but also provide, uh, the venues and facilities to, for the purpose of organizing promotional, uh, activities in sport. So we don't just concentrate in hardware. We also have software.
Recreational clubs. For each of the clubs that has had its lease renewed since expiry in twenty eleven or twenty twelve, each one of those clubs has to provide us with what we call an opening up scheme. They must make a minimum number of hours available per month to outside organizations for booking and for use. This scheme is only just starting. Um, we have put in place a very thorough monitoring scheme and we'll be looking at it on a quarterly basis and monitoring the actual usage, um, and checking to make sure that these accounts are correct. As soon as we have a reasonable amount of such information, we'll certainly be able to make that available publicly. Okay.
What about, uh, the compliance by fifty-two out of the fifty-eight NSA's? Well, actually, all the eight, uh, the la- the latest information is that all fifty-eight NSA's have complied with this, uh, requirement of uploading selection criteria to their websites. I want to talk about H A B one five eight. We know that, uh, the, the, the situation has deteriorated with re- with regard to, uh, unlicensed guest houses. And the H A D has, uh, increased the, uh, number of inspections. If we look at the staff establishment and, uh, staff cost, compare, if we compare twenty thirteen fourteen to twenty twelve thirteen, there's an increase of seven staff members. And then next year, it's going to have another two on the establishment. And, uh, would inspection and the effectiveness of the inspection scheme be ever see affected because of a lack of staff? Or are you going to, uh, decrease the frequency of ex- inspection because of, uh, uh, the shortage of staff? As for B, annually, we s- we have, we have seen the number of prosecution cases, uh, increasing over the years. I've asked the department, uh, to apply for review of sentencing in cases where, uh, the sentence is too lenient. There was one such case in, uh, twenty thirteen fourteen. Would the administration, uh, assess, uh, the number of, uh, review cases that have to be brought to the to the, uh, court, um, in the coming year? Would, is there an estimate for such cases? Uh, according to Mr. Yu, uh, well, we have a modest increase in, uh, staff members. But the number of inspection has increased, uh, quite substantially. So you can see that our licensing, the authority staff are working very hard to, uh, uh, combat, uh, illegal, uh, guest houses. We are carrying out a review now and very, uh, we- very quickly, we would come out to consult, uh, the public on how to tighten up the requirements in the law. And we also want to, uh, increase the penalty levels so as to achieve a greater deterrence, deterrent effect. Mr. Yu is correct. We are also doing a lot in, uh, reviewing the sentence. We are, we de- we have devoted a lot of resources in undercover operations and in, uh, inspection and prosecution. And sometimes the sentence is too light. If, uh, it's a case of, uh, of, of a lenient sentence, we would apply for reviews. Well, this year, you are going to have two more staff members. And you have to handle so much, uh, undercover operations and inspections. Do you have sufficient manpower? Uh, I would defer to my colleague direct, uh, director of Home Affairs. Apart from hiring additional, uh, staff, we are also going to hire people with, uh, experience in the discipline services and also carry out raid operations. And at different times, we would use different modes of operation. So that the guests, illegal guest houses cannot, uh, predict what we are going to do. And therefore, we can, uh, increase the, uh, success rate. So we do not just rely on increasing manpower. We have been constantly, uh, reviewing the operations to go, to adopt, so that, so as to adopt better approaches. Can you estimate how many review cases that there will be in the coming year? As the secretary has said, if there's a reasonable ground to lodge in a bill, we would do so.
In, uh, uh, if we reject applications for licenses, then of course, um, applicants can decide whether they, uh, want to, uh, seek, uh, judicial review. So I will, uh, let the four members, uh, ask their questions. Um, Ms. Helena Wong, I want to follow up on the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of funding for the district council. Now, uh, Mr. Ho Chi Phong, uh, Central and Western District Councilor, is still, um, staging, um, a, um, sitting, um, a protest, um, at the Central and Western, um, District, uh, Council, uh, venue. Some people say that he is trying to stir up trouble. I want to say that these two members, um, uh, Mr. Hoy is an elected district councillor and the other, uh, one is a co-opted member. And they are discharging their duties. They, uh, um, monitoring the, um, uh, uh, proper approval of funding. They want everything to be transparent. Now, now when, um, um, the administration allocates, uh, funding to the district council, uh, for allocation to outside bodies, do you require district councils to, um, discuss and approve such funding in an open and transparent manner? Uh, in other words, uh, do you require, uh, that, um, open meetings be held? Um, do you need to make sure that, um, um, funding is allocated to, um, um, friendly organizations? Um, um, so, um, um, now the chairman said that, uh, in fact, he, uh, would have wanted, um, papers to be dealt with by circulation so that he would not have to chair the meeting. This is regrettable. Now, in Legco, um, uh, um, uh, we have open meetings, members can ask questions, the media are present. And if members ask questions, um, they will not be, uh, removed from the conference room. When members want to ask questions, they will not be told that the meeting will be adjourned and everything will be decided by a circulation of papers. So I think, uh, both Legco and district council should operate in a fair, open and transparent manner. And my question is whether the H A B will make sure that, um, district councils, uh, operate in an open and transparent manner? And we make sure that, um, district councillors will not be barred from, uh, asking questions and that, um, the press will be, um, excluded from the, um, meetings. And then, uh, uh, what if there are members, uh, district councillors who, uh, are consultants or members of certain, um, applicants? Um, now the, uh, in fact, DP members just want to, um, enhance transparency and accountability and they suffered, um, they were not allowed to, um, uh, they were barred or, um, denied access to the toilet. And that was because, um, people didn't want them to ask ques- further questions. So we hope that, um, when funding is approved, the, uh, procedures should be, um, um, open and transparent. All right, I think we should not discuss, um, individual cases. Um, but is it that, um, the press cannot be allowed to cover, um, such proceedings? Uh, Chairman, we're talking about the use of public funds and of course, um, there must be, um, openness and transparency. And we do, uh, expect, um, district councils to be able to operate in a reasonable manner. Now, we've heard accusations or allegations like, um, um, transfer of interest, persecution. And I, um, don't think, um, these allegations are really, uh, based on facts. If there is transfer of interest, if there, um, is any misuse of public funds, such acts would definitely be sanctioned. Um, and I think, um, um, such cases can be, um, handed over to the law enforcement agencies for investigation. So we're not dealing with individual cases here. We are here to discuss the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen estimates. Uh, Mr. Chen Kuo-Chi, I want to ask a question about H A B zero two zero. Uh, it's good that, um, the administration is attaching more importance to, um, life planning, uh, for young people. Uh, we understand that, uh, the Education Bureau deploys a dedicated teacher, um, to each school to do, uh, life planning for students. And then the H A B will set aside ten million dollars for NGOs, um, to enter schools to, um, um, do similar work. So I just want to know the similarities and differences between, um, the work of the NGOs and the work of the Education Bureau. And, um, then in the reply, zero two zero, it is said that ten million dollars, um, will be, um, um, set aside. We have over four hundred secondary schools. So in other words, we're talking about only about twenty thousand dollars per school. Uh, and, um, the, the amount will, will need to be spent over a year. So what, uh, will be the arrangements? And, uh, what do you expect the NGOs to do, uh, in the schools? And how can you make sure that the ten million dollars can be, um, wisely spent? I think I'll ask Ms. Fu to, uh, supplement. Now, in fact, um, the two schemes can be launched only after members have approved the estimates. And then, uh, we'll have to, uh, invite NGOs to apply. So concerning, um, the activities to be organized and also the division of labor between NGOs and the teachers in schools, I don't think I can give you details at this stage. Ms. Fu?
Yes, we are grateful to, uh, a number of NGOs, um, uh, which, um, have shared their experience with us. And when, um, they, um, provide that service to students in schools, we were allowed in to observe, um, the process. And some experienced NGOs have also recently given us, um, valuable comments and suggestions. As the secretary has pointed out, uh, we need to effectively provide resources to NGOs so that they can serve the students, uh, effectively. Um, uh, parent, uh, or rather, schools, uh, do have a lot of say concerning, uh, what, um, services need to be provided by NGOs. NGOs, um, uh, can, uh, do liaison work so as to bring in the business, uh, sector and, um, the tertiary institutions. Also, uh, the ten million dollars will be, uh, used by, or will be shared among four hundred odd schools. And I think this amount is too small. I just want to know, um, more about how the ten million dollars, uh, will be used. And as you don't have the details at, at this stage, maybe you can give us the details later. Thank you. Mr. Dennis Quo, thank you, Chairman. I want to ask, um, questions about legal aid. In September twenty thirteen, there was, um, a court of appeal case. And V D Francis Stop said that for many cases, um, 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 criminal cases, appeal cases, uh, legal aid should have been granted. But then in many such criminal cases, legal aid has been denied.
Questions of concern by this court over the years seem to have no effect. I accept that the problem is not easy of resolution, but it's certainly one that demands serious and active attention.
So, uh, despite, uh, repeated concerns raised by the courts, um, there, uh, have been, um, unrepresented litigants in many appeal cases. Um, for appeals from the magistracy court to the high court, sixty percent of the cases involve unrepresented litigants. So I said that, um, there are problems concerning the, um, vetting of legal aid applications. And, uh, um, uh, ha- have you heeded the, um, concerns, uh, raised by the courts repeatedly? And I think you know that, um, um, yeah, um, cases involving, uh, unrepresented litigants are more con- time-consuming to the court. So that will, um, have some, um, uh, that would mean some strain on, um, the manpower resources in the courts. Yes, Director of Legal Aid? Now concerning, um, legal aid for criminal cases, according to the rules, uh, for criminal appeal cases, um, the, um, applicant must have, um, um, uh, merits or must show merits in this case. So there are three persons involved in vetting the application. First of all, um, the barrister, um, representing the applicant. And then second, the, uh, legal aid council responsible for the case. And then the director officer in our criminal section will also study the case. And then a final decision will be reached after, um, the three of them have studied the case. Um, it's true that the Court of Appeal has said, um, several times, it would be good if we can approve legal aid for, um, criminal cases. But then, uh, even very experienced lawyers will find it very difficult to, um, predict the outcome of the court case. We, uh, I want to say that we do agree with the Court of Appeal and we, uh, uh, vetting such applications very seriously. Uh, and in fact, the Court of Appeal, according to the law, can grant legal aid to the, uh, appellant. We do have, uh, enough resources to, um, uh, monitor the progress of assigned, um, cases. And also, if the applicant, um, can obtain some independent advice, for example, advice from the bar association, then we will review our decision. Yes, Mr. Tony Chair, thank you for allowing me to, uh, ask, um, my questions. H A B one four nine. Um, I know that many people are very concerned about building management. Uh, owners want the government to assist them in, uh, building management and building manu- maintenance, um, matters. They don't want to fall into traps. They don't want to, um, um, spend money unnecessarily. And then it is said here that, um, four hundred thousand dollars, uh, will be, um, spent on the pilot scheme, A P E C. And so, um, do, do you know how many, um, APs will join the scheme? And how long will the scheme last? And when are you going to review and assess the effectiveness of the scheme? Yes, Mrs. Pamela Tan?
Uh, Chairman, we work with the three professional institutes. They, um, will provide, um, free of charge service. And so, um, the ex- amount of expenditure is not great. Um, they will just, um, provide some travel expenses for the APs and will need also, uh, executive system to, um, do, um, the, um, support work. Um, we have about, um, seventy, uh, applications so far. Um, and we hope to, um, assist, um, um, this number of buildings. And so we are having discussions. And so we are having discussions of the three professional institutes and they are willing to deploy more APs to help us cover more buildings and we hope that we'll be able to accept as many applications as possible. And then this APEC scheme will be run on a pilot basis for one year and following that there will be an assessment or a review and if it is found to be effective, we will hope to regularize it. Then Chairman?
And there is another scheme starting from 2011, the BM Pass scheme. I want to know how many three new buildings have taken part? And it is said that you are going to recruit more residents from these buildings to become resident liaison ambassadors. So do you have a target number of RLAs in mind?
On the provision of consultancy service, we're not just targeting the so-called three new buildings, we're also targeting the old buildings or buildings with low ratable values and we offer them help. In the first phase, after three years, we covered 1,250 buildings. The original target was just 1,200. We're going to launch the second phase, phase two. We're also going to cover another 1,200 old buildings apart from the so-called three new buildings. Old buildings and buildings with low ratable values will also be assisted. And the ambassador scheme, our RLAs, we are very encouraged that we have recruited more than 1,000 ambassadors from 500 buildings. There are three new buildings or buildings where the grassroots reside and they are very helpful in assisting building management issues. True a lie, but Dr. Kukake, would you like to speak? If so, I will give you three minutes. I want to talk about the sports policy. In Hong Kong, our sports policy doesn't encourage our athlete or normal people to take part in sports activities, whether we're talking about the Phoenix Scheme or in relation to the selection of athletes for competitions. The government turns a bright eye to what the SFNOC is doing. SFNOC is a messy organization, so is the Hong Kong Football Association. It's been said that we need to designate a sports commissioner so that the sports scene is not an ugly scene. I use this word advisedly because many athletes have been training for a long, long time and in particular, I remember in the past Winter Olympics and then you have the office bearers elected through an inner circle and posts can be inherited by a son from a father. So can the government do something through funding and through liaison with schools? We can have more venues and facilities open up for community use. We've been asking for this for over 10 years and still very little, not much has been done. Secretary? I just don't know which question I should respond to. Well, it's up to you. There are two questions. I think the member is offering comments rather than asking questions, but then you can offer your comments. Well, we have done a lot. Our sports policy is clear and we have heard Dr. Quo's comments. In a new financial years, I want to get some concrete figures for the coming year. For example, are you going to provide sports venues for public use? Yes, we do have, we are liaising with schools and some schools are already opening up their sports facilities. Whether all schools can do this depend on individual schools' capacity. Can you give us some concrete figures? To what extent would you like to increase the number of schools covered in the network? All right, so it's up to individual schools. We have completed this session. Let's see, we'll see you all tomorrow at 9:30.